Kupczynski?
Here.
Coburn?
Here.
And Counselor Olson is excused. He's still out.
Sickly?
Yep, he's still got that.
Well, cut the crud.
Going around. Okay. First on our agenda, counsel, is a public hearing, and this is for the authorizing sale of city-owned land to Hudson Capital Corporation. And with that, at 7:16 PM, I'll open up the public hearing. So, Ed.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the order of business tonight is to first conduct a public hearing on the sale of city-owned land, approximately 15.89 acres. Shown on the map that you have in your packet on page four, we've highlighted Lot Two. The sale is of land on approximately at the intersection of Timber Ridge and Knox Butte Road, and it's highlighted again on that map. The sale is to Hudson Capital. It's Miles Bredner. And if you, after the public hearing, decide that you would like to move forward with the sale, there's a resolution for your approval. And I believe we've distributed a revised resolution. It should be in front of you on the dais. Hopefully, everyone has a copy. The only change is down toward the end of it where we inserted a reference to the Exhibit A in the resolution. That wasn't originally included in that packet. If you were so inclined, then we would seek your approval of a resolution, and that will allow the city manager to execute the purchase and sale agreement as well as any related documents to the sale.
Okay. Questions, Ed? Okay. And yes, this has been at a work session, so we've discussed this item. Okay. All right. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this public hearing? There wasn't anyone that signed up for it. And this would be for the sale of 15.89 acres of city-owned land at the northwest corner of Knox Butte Road and Timber Ridge Road. Okay, all right. Seeing anyone? With that, then I will close the public hearing at 7:18 PM. And counsel, what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve. Resolution as revised.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Ed. All right. Next is business from the public. Anyone here this evening that had an item to bring forward to us? Okay, all right. Not seeing anybody. Okay. Next would be adoption of a resolution. This is on page seven. This is approving an extended property tax abatement agreement between the City of Albany and co-sponsor of the South Saniam Enterprise Zone and Griffin Brothers. So, John Bascone, did you want to say anything on this item? Which, John, I think I will ask you. We've kind of brought this up in the past. There isn't a map or anything to show us where this was at.
It's Marion Street, South Marion Street, Hill and Casey Industrial Property.
Okay, all right.
And Marion Street.
Yeah, I know where that is. Yeah, okay. Thank you.
So, this is a pretty old company, started in Salem in the 1930s, and had grown their Salem facility, and they acquired the old Casey Industrial site. Most recently was Triple S and Truskin was in there. Nice, big site, metal building, been a little rundown of late, and they're going to completely remodel it. They're going to put fire sprinklers in and move jobs down to Salem, and they're going to add at least one job, about a million and a half dollars' worth of investment. I think it's good for the communities. They're happy to be there. The agents to get them in there because of the fire issues and the building code issues on site, but we got past those. City staff was up when getting to a yes on that one, so. Nice little manufacturer. We call them a chemical company, but they actually are mixing chemicals. They're not making basic chemicals. So, they make cleaning products for restaurants and other industries.
Well, actually, that sounds better when, I mean, Casey Industrial was there for years, but they used to do the big pounding of metal. And during the middle of the night, I heard that.
Yeah, they should be pounding them.
Many years, I heard that pounding of the metal. It's like somebody's, you know, taken a baseball bat to a garbage can and you hear that several times a night.
I think it's worse than that, when it's a great big vessel.
This is the company that city council helped them with their water meter, because the property didn't have a water meter.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, counsel, you have questions?
Do you know when they're going to do the work or when they anticipate being done and moving in?
Yeah, they started. They were hoping to move in this month.
Oh, wow, okay.
Second question. You say million and a half. Is that including purchase of the?
That's property and improvements.
And improve, okay. Thank you.
I heard they got a screaming deal on the property, but quite a bit of improvements for strengthening the building, hardening the building, sprinkler systems and all that.
And how much would their tax abatement, how much would it be? Do you know, yearly?
I don't know. I mean, I could have calculated, but I don't. I don't usually do that, because I don't know what's going to be assessed at. But they'll be paying property taxes on the value that's there, and then they just get the abatement on their piece of investment.
Investment.
And in order to get the extra two years, they have to pay the extra 150% of Lynn County's average annual wage and benefits. So, if they don't make, if they don't meet that wage level, then they don't get the extra two years. Basic Enterprise Zone is three years, tax and jetty.
So, the investment where you're saying one and a half million includes the land, so it's basically would be just, it's just going to be less than that is going to be their portion?
Yeah.
Still get the same amount of tax we got, well, the county got before.
Yeah.
For that period of time.
Okay. No questions? What would you like to do? There's a resolution on page seven.
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Okay, counsel, you have adoption of the consent calendar. There's several minutes on there, and just one other item. So, if there isn't any items that need to be pulled off this evening, I'll entertain a motion.
Move for the adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right. Next is award of contracts, and this is for design-build contract for the Vine Water Treatment Plant Improvements. All right. You lucked out, Nolan, in being here. I haven't seen you in a while.
For those who don't even remember me, I'm Nolan Nelson. I'm an engineer with Public Works Department, and I am the project manager for the WTP 1702 Vine Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project. I am here seeking award for the design-build contract to go to Pacific Excavation out of Eugene. Just because this is kind of a different project than we normally, how we normally bid, I'll give a quick rundown and description of where we've been and what the next steps are going to be in the project. The Vine Water Treatment Plant Improvement Project was identified in the 2017 capital improvements program. Project included two major components, one being testing the filter media down at the Vine Street Plant, as well as fixing a wall between two of the filters that is showing that it's leaking between the two filters. On March 22 of 2017, council approved the design-build project delivery method. The method was selected to provide a better design with a lower impact to the plant by having contractor and the engineer and the city all working together right from the beginning of the design, rather than the typical design, design and build. On September 15, 2017, the city advertised requests for proposals to provide design-build services, and then on October 17, 2017, two proposals were submitted and opened as a response to the RFP. Selection review committee consisting of three of the public works employees reviewed those proposals and selected the design-build team consisting of Pacific Excavation as the main contractor, and then they are subcontracting engineering to Murray Smith of Portland. So, they will be handling that. The proposals reviewed and scored both on cost and non-cost criteria. The non-cost criteria were based on qualifications of the project team, past relevant experience, project understanding, project approach, just general, how well do they know the project and how well can they do the project? There were a couple items that were based on costs, that we had them include the cost as lump sum items, one of those being the overall cost to analyze the filters and provide a filter media report. And then the other cost was to remove, protect, and reinstall the filter media as needed for the filters that will be repairing the wall. So, based on the proposals, the partnered companies are both well-qualified and have recent relevant experience, as well as they had the lower costs of the two proposals. Both companies that are requesting award here have worked with the city recently on a couple different capital projects. If council awards tonight, the project will be completed in two phases. This initial award is just for the first phase, which is the analysis portion. They will do the entire filter media analysis and provide a report that will determine the remaining service life and whether or not we need to replace any of the filter media. And then the other portion of what will be approved at Phase One is analysis of the wall repair, see if we can figure out the exact point of the leak and how to go about repairing it. Towards the end of Phase One here, which won't take very long, they'll end up putting together a price which will lead into Phase Two, so they'll bring it to 80% design, as well as provide a gross or a maximum price for the next phase of the project. Once that is completed, we will be coming back to council for approval on the second phase. The city will have the right to reject that price, as well as potentially move forward with design with them or somebody else, but hopefully with them. So, end of Phase One, we'll be coming back. We'll get another award. It'll come through as a change order if we move forward with the same contractor. Then we'll move into Phase Two, and Phase Two will simply be finalizing the design. We already have the method, but the plans and specs won't be up to final design until Phase Two, and then we'll move into actually completing the construction and fixing the wall. So, other than that, you've been provided a summary of the estimated Phase One costs. Something to note on there, which may not be obvious, is that they talk about removing the filter media. That is a guaranteed price that we got on the RFP, but after initial, like preliminary meetings, scoping meetings that come up with our preliminary estimates, it is looking like we most likely will not have to remove the media, and so it's through a different entry. So, that item is still in there, but it is likely to be significantly reduced or eliminated completely. So, there's an extra, I think, 36 grand in there that potentially could go away. And at this time, I can answer any questions you might have.
I'll have to defer to staff and city manager on this, but it says that you, in the first paragraph or discussion on our page 21, that you received two responses, and you alluded to that. I don't see, and normally, we see what those bids are and who they were from, et cetera, et cetera, and we can see that, you know, yes, you did pick a lower one, but I have no idea what the second bidder was.
I can give you that information right now.
It's moot at this point, but going forward, it'd be nice to have that information as part of our packet.
It would have been an entire packet of their proposal, just because?
No, not the, just the.
Just the numbers.
Just the numbers, like we normally get on any of our bids.
This one was a little odd, is why it wasn't included, because it's not strictly cost-based. But, yeah, I can see why it would be good to have.
So, what was the cost?
The other people's cost? They had $120,000 for filter media analysis and $54,000 for filter media removal. So, they, they had $180,000 though, for just the two item, and that would have been higher for other items.
So, I had a couple of questions, but I think you maybe have answered them, but I know this is a challenging project, and if I remember right, I went out for bid before with no responses, and this kind of led to the design-build concept.
This one didn't go out to bid before. We started wanting to go.
Okay. But, yeah, city staff gave me a tour of the, well, the whole facility, but specifically looking at this. So, my question was going to be, you know, are we going to be in a crunch if we can't utilize the facility? Granted, it's, you know, winter time, and my thought was, you remove all this media, and they give you a price to fix it that's, you know, sky-high, but they kind of have us over a barrel. Number one, it sounds like maybe they don't have to remove the media, and then, you know, maybe that's not an issue, but is there a Plan B or a way to approach it if the costs seem high for Phase Two?
Within the contract, they will be responsible for putting it back in the service if we bail out. They will be paid for that work, but yes, they will have to put it back in the service. We won't, they aren't allowed to just walk away.
And then will the city own the engineering services?
Yes, to 80%, so they won't be final design, but we will know what the design is and how they were planning on approaching it and what method they were going to use to repair it. It won't necessarily be 100% lands, which are bid ready.
So, again, I'm thinking Plan B, if their price seems too high, is it possible to take the engineering results and go out to bid?
Yes, and that was specifically written into the request for proposals that we issued, that we had the right to go out to a different company if we felt that their price was too high.
Right, but you could utilize the engineering. That's a good call. Good job. So, thank you.
Could you tell me the numbers again of the second bid?
All right. It was, so the line item for filter media analysis, which our bidder that we're selecting had it at about 30, 20 to 30 grand. They had $120,000 for that number. And then, which we had had an estimate ourselves that we had looked at just going out ourselves, and it was in the about 30-grand range, so we're not sure why they were, we looked at their breakdown of hours, and they had a significant amount of hours in there for an unknown reason. And then they had $54,000 for filter media removal, which was higher than the selected group, but not necessarily out of the range of being competitive.
The reason I ask is, that's night and day, and what about change orders and everything else like that when they get into it? If there's that much difference between two qualified bidders?
The, the other bidder was hiring somebody different that doesn't specialize in this type of work, and I'm guessing that is why they had an overestimate on price. It is not worth, there's a lot of, it's not a lot of hidden stuff. This filter media is sitting at the surface, and the people that the other group is hiring to do this exclusively do this type of work, and it's not like they're running into unknowns.
Okay. And I think the other thing, Mike, it was, there's a design-build element of this, and I've seen this before. Somebody's got a better idea or more experience.
Right.
On a design-build, you can see that gap.
That's a huge gap.
It is.
I've got, been a little bitter on jobs where people were just absolutely convinced I was going to lose my shirt, and they were ready to bet money on it, and they were some of my more profitable jobs, that, you know, had a better idea, better mousetrap.
It just comes to mind.
Okay, counsel, what would you like to, any more questions of Nolan, or what would you like to do with this item?
Move to award the bid. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right. Thank you, Nolan. Next item is awarding multiple contracts for the purchase of water treatment chemicals and authorizing the public works operations director to sign contracts resulting from the invitation to bid for water treatment chemicals. So, Chris, it must be yours.
Yes, ma'am. So, there's a memo on page 24 of your packet. Typically, in the past, we've ordered chemical loads individually as we've run out or getting to the end of our chemicals, which has resulted in dozens of calls for quotes and individual purchase orders that are created over the years. So, we worked with our procurement officer to come up with this process. It will significantly reduce staff time, just in having to call for quotes every time and process the paperwork. It also locks in the prices for the chemicals, and chemicals can be volatile from month to month or year to year. It really depends. Some of them are pretty steady. Some of them can go all over the place. So, it's nice to have that security. It gives us some better ability to budget with some confidence for chemicals, which, you know, some years, we really miss the mark when they're bad. So, the award is a bit unusual in that you can see there are several vendors who will be getting contracts, and the vendors were invited to bid on all of the chemicals that they wanted to, and so there's a mishmash of vendors and chemicals. So, it's unusual, but it hopefully is clear in the table who's doing what.
It's a little amazing.
And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is the kind of thing I was looking to see.
Right, and this is a really more straightforward process than what they did with the water plant, so easier to handle.
I just wanted to verify, all the bidders understood that it was a line item bid that you could cherry pick?
Yes.
And the bids somewhat reflect that, I guess. It's a great approach, and I agree with Ray, you know, but it's pretty important that bidders understand that.
Yeah.
Sandbag or move money around places and realize that that didn't work so well.
And I think that, you know, there are some companies that only really market in one or two types of chemicals, so they're a little more limited.
Great, very good.
All right. Counsel, what would you like to do with this item? There's a resolution on page 26.
I move for the adoption of resolution on page 26.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Next is approval of contract increase, and this is for furnishings-related services for fire station and police station. So, Captain, welcome.
And what was said to the 343rd was the increase, which was over 10%, so we had a council approval of $33,000, which came. Originally, it was higher, and April, you guys, council adopted the grant or approved the grant from the HIDA funds for the task force in the building. That diminished $29,000 of that increase. So, the total break-up was roughly $17,000 for fire furnishings and $17,615,900 for this place. Recommend that the council's contract increase to Smith CFI to complete the furnishing purchases for both buildings.
Okay, yeah, Rich?
Were these increases in furnishings simply an oversight or a change in what was going to happen between one time and another, or?
Early on, the workspace for HIDA, whether or not we was going to get furnishings or who was going to cover those furnishings, they were able to apply that grant money from them was worn. The second, some of the tenants' work stations, at least for the police department, we were in the old building, we were in two tenants and a sergeant at one desk, and two tenants and a sergeant at another desk, not an individual workstation. So, as we kind of reorganized with our management, there were several workstations. And so, the needed furnishings, as we're kind of reorganizing, are putting in different costs.
I'm in favor of this. I guess I have received from constituents concerns about specifications of desks and that kind of thing being made to a specific manufacturer when that manufacturer does not have any local representation. And the local folks, while they say that their product is not exactly the same, it is comparable, they didn't get a chance because it was specified. I understand how things work, but just know going forward that this is a concern.
I just want to say, this does not come as a surprise to me, because moving from where you were to where you are now, with the agency also there, there's no way that you could have figured out each and every item, so I'm no problem with this, because I know you guys have done well in keeping everything that you can and not going overboard.
Okay, all right. Any other questions, or what would you like to do with this item?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Captain, and how you liking the new station?
Politically correct answer.
Just nice, yeah. So, so much more room. It's just great, so, thank you. Okay, next is a contract extension, and this one's for custodial services with Willamette Valley Rehabilitation Center. Who's taking this one on? Oh, okay, hi, Ed. You get the honors of this one.
Good evening. I'm Diane Kupczynski, purchasing coordinator. Recently, our custodial contract expired in December 1st, 2017. Our previous contract was awarded to Willamette Valley Rehabilitation Center back in January of 2012, was a five-year contract with one-year extension. What staff is requesting is an extension of the existing contract with the same conditions and terms. This will allow staff to complete a successful proposal and go out for a new service. We're requesting an extension of existing contract. Are there any questions?
Questions?
One thing, I'm wondering why this is coming to us on January 10th, when it expired December 31st. I'm thinking that maybe this should be, you know, because what if we decided, no, we don't like what's going on, and so we don't want to extend it, you know? So, I would recommend that maybe we think ahead a little bit, because, you know, I mean, this could put you in a real awkward position as to not having services if we didn't agree.
I understand. We did try to get the new services put into place. That just didn't come to fruition. So, this is our next approach. State law requires us to consider qualified rehabilitation facility. The only three that we can go out to are in the Lynn County area, and we will be putting that together sometime in the next month or two, committing it to the.
Yeah, and that was another question. I've been thinking, rocking my brain today, and I finally asked my husband, because he was a commissioner, because I remember in the county that they have to go to these vocational services for governmental services, custodial services, and I just wondered, we have the same requirements then?
We do. All public agencies are required to consider qualified rehabilitation facility first, unless those within your area cannot provide it, or have somehow violated or been negligent in providing those services to you for about three years, then you can opt to go out. in providing those services to you for about three years, then you have to go out to the open market.
I see. And we have three here in Lynn County?
We have three in Lynn County.
Okay, I was thinking we only have one, yeah.
One is Willamette Valley and I think the other one is Garden.
Oh, okay.
Other in Marion County.
Okay, thank you.
Willamette Valley is, what, Lebanon?
Lebanon.
Yes.
Okay, what would you like to do with this?
Move to approve a one-year contract extension.
Second.
All right. Okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. Thank you, Diane. So, okay, next, council, this is our annual slate of appointments to city boards, committees and commissions. As you can see, we do have a lot here to approve tonight and a lot of them are mostly all reappointments. So we just have a few new members that will be coming on board. We didn't have very many vacancies this time or, so most members wanted to stay on board. So, and, so what would you like to do with this item?
Approve them en masse. I mean, if everybody's looked at them and everybody's happy.
Second?
Okay, motion's been made to approve in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, all right. And so then what normally is done is everyone is sent a letter that they are, have been appointed and, or reappointed on that, so, and that takes care of that item. Next is the council audit committee. This one is, meets about once a year. So this would be for reappointing, unless it's got to be, I think my term expires, Sue Bolden's term expires and, let's see, what was going to be?
Does mine expire this year?
Nope, I think yours is still on. So this would be just reappointing Sue and I unless you're wanting somebody else to be on.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, and then Ray's still on and Bessie's still on.
Yeah.
Okay?
So do you want to be on it?
Yep, yep, it's, it's an easy committee.
So are we mad at you so we don't want to let you be on?
Yeah, it's totally up to you, no problem.
Well, then I'll do the politically correct thing and say, let's reappoint.
Okay, so reappoint existing members.
Existing members.
Second.
Okay, all right. Any discussion?
This is reappointing Sharon Canopa and Sue Bolden.
And Sue Bolden, yeah.
As long as, as long as Sue has said she will want to do it, I know.
She's wonderful. She's one that really takes, usually chairs it, takes a lot of lead and meeting with Stewart ahead of time, really going through all the, you know, details and she's such a valuable budget committee member, we're really fortunate to have her.
It's her business too.
So, yeah, but, okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And, and it dawned on me on the hospital facility authority committee and I just was talking to Marilyn and Marion Stewart ahead of time. You know, this is a committee that's never met in over 20 years. It's one that's kind of a state law requirement, but what we've had down, there's, I think there's some requirements on here that we need to relook at. And one is the four directors shall be lay members of the Albany Budget Committee, but that looks like it's council direction and that could be just as council members be a part of that. So you're not subjecting lay members to a committee that never meets at all. So if council's okay, can we have staff bring this back in two weeks and relook up what our council policy is on that?
Fine, ma'am.
Okay, all right, so.
I don't know, do you think they'll meet before then?
How do you fit a no-meeting committee into your schedule?
I know, yeah, it's not an easy one.
Well, you put it down along the edge where no one can see it.
Yeah, so that will come back then. And Mary, you'll let, and Marilyn will let Laura know about it and I can chat with her about it too. Okay, with that, that's our agenda items. Next is business from the council. Bessie, anything this evening?
Just want to say that I've been appointed to the, by the LOC, to the Finance and Taxation Committee and also the General Government Committee, so I'll be looking forward to serving on them.
Good, great, thank you. Thank you for doing that, yeah. Okay, Bill, anything? No? Rich?
Actually, county committees, I've just been reappointed to two, the Lynn County Public Safety Coordinating Council and Lynn County Parks Commission, which are, in fact, that's tomorrow night.
Oh, good.
And that's it.
Yep, okay. Ray? Nothing, Mike?
Nope.
Okay, no. The only thing I had is there was the copy that was handed out to you was from Hayden Holmes for them giving the $1,000 donation to the carousel on that. That was it today. We did have a kind of a grand reopening and thank you, Councilor Sykes, for attending for, at Safeway. So they did a remodel, so they had all their corporates. Safeway actually is Albertson's now. Albertson's had bought out Safeway a few years ago, so it's Albertson's Safeway, but, so they did their, they had all the corporate that was down there, so that was, that was a nice, well-attended, so, okay, that's it. Peter?
Nothing, just to note that Monday is holiday in honor of Martin Luther King Jr.
Yep, great, yeah, okay. Is that it? Staff have anything? So with that, all right, we've got a quick meeting then this evening, so we will have a work session next, on Monday, the 22nd and a regular session's the 24th, but we do have Kara next week, so don't forget Kara.
Yeah, we have a meeting.
Okay, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, folks, thank you.